The United States of America, in this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no requests to speak at open forum, so we'll jump right in to the logo and mascot presentation.
To the main event?
The main event.
Alright, so just before we go get the main event behind the closed doors and reveal this, not to delete any excitement or anything, but just really want to say thank you to the entire community. First of all, the school board, our school community, our alumni, our parents, our kids. The stakeholder groups, all the way through the nickname update and our change to the logo and mascot, have been positive, have been, I think heartfelt, and something that I was extremely proud of just watching the process is the characteristics that the students came up with, that they wanted the nickname and mascot to identify. And that was something that I was extremely proud of, like what do you, who are you as a student body? What do you want to represent? And then the next step is when we did that same activity at night with our parents and our staff and our community members, they came up with very similar characteristics. And it's something that we've actually used as a word wall for other types of events, the publications, is just the how the community, how the staff and how the kids wanted to be described as. And I thought that was super powerful that the kids did that and the community and the staff aligned the light. So with this process here, we heavily involved our student stakeholder group to be able to look at our submissions. We had seven different submissions of all different qualities, types and shapes. And tonight, it has been narrowed down to the final logo for acceptance tonight by the school board. And without further ado, I would love to introduce our students and our new logo and mascot of the Sydney Central School District. So without further ado, the new logo text of the Sydney Sabers. And I think it would only be appropriate if we join representative from our group to join them in this celebration. Mr. Stenner, you got a little bit on. Little snub. So as we stand here really quick, I would like to read the resolution that will be accepted tonight by our school board. Right? So this is the resolution approving the intellectual property release agreement. So at the regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Sydney Central School District held on Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, 6:30 in the high school library, whereas the school district recently adopted a new school district nickname, the Sydney Sabers, based on input from students, staff, parents and alumni. And whereas the board requested that community members submit proposed designs for the new Sydney Sabers logo and mascot. And whereas the Sydney Student Stakeholder Committee, after considering community submissions, recommended that this superintendent of schools accept the logo and mascot designed by the local business, Schubert Enterprises. Jerry, Tim, come on up.
This is Tim Schubert and Jerry Schubert from Schubert Enterprises that designed the logo for submissions. Whereas Schubert Enterprises is willing to relinquish its ownership to all right, title and interest in their proposed design for the Sydney Sabers logo and mascot and all related and associated intellectual properties. And whereas the board wishes to acquire such right, title and interest in the above described intellectual property. And whereas the Board of Education has had the opportunity to review the proposal, now thereafter, the Board of Education of this school district resolves as follows. The Board of Education acknowledged the efforts of all community members involved in the development of the nickname, logo and mascot, and commends the Student Stakeholder Committee for their hard work and valuable input throughout the process. The Board of Education hereby approves the attached intellectual properties release agreement between the Sydney Central School District and Schubert Enterprises, which transfers all rights, titles and interests to the Sydney Sabers logo and mascot designed by Schubert Enterprises. The board authorizes the superintendent executive to execute this agreement in the form of approved by legal counsel. This resolution shall take effect immediately. So congratulations, Sydney Central School District. Thank you so much, Tim and Jerry Schubert, for the design and the commitment to the Sydney Central School.
Just to scroll through a couple of things on that at the TV as we go through here. Is now that I can actually reveal this, we'll go through kind of what the four main logos, if you will, for the Sydney Central School District. This will be what's considered the full or the main logo. This is the solo shot of the Saber that will be used. This will be the text for the Sydney Sabers that will be used. And this is Sabers, and I apologize if the color is the same color as what you saw, it is my fault. And just the Sabers logo. There are a couple of things that, just to point out, it's just the block S's on both sides, which is kind of unique. And again, that was something that was stressed in the process of this. Just some things, some apparel, we'll kind of scroll through. And you'll see Schubert's have set up some merchandise that will be available pretty soon, actually. I believe about seven o'clock, the store goes live. So you'll see some apparel that's in the back that's physically set up here, we'll take a look at that. And just here are some examples of what the logo could look like on certain products. We will still use what we call the formal S as a logo, and we'll still use the block S as a logo. And the same colors remain. Again, we partnered with the Schubert's in this process, and I'll just kind of pull up here the link to the school store, which will go live. And in the back, there's some merchandise that has already been put together with the new logos on it, so we kind of take a look at them, feel them, touch them, see them. So this is the Sabers, Sydney Sabers gear, some everyday basics. Some premium apparel. And then some hat gear to start, some hats to start, which we got some of the samples of that in the back. So we're excited to take the new steps. Alright, thank you. Yeah, if we're going to take a look at some of the stuff that Schubert's has brought to see some samples of. Oh, real quick, could we get a photo before we go back? Sorry, I apologize. Kids in the school board. Yeah, you want to sit, could you guys up behind them?
Yeah, if they want, the board members want to come. Come out, and then you can go behind the kids or, yeah, kids stuff on.
Everyone, feel free to look at the merchandise and do what you need to do, but we're gonna move forward to our FFA Leadership Convention presentation.
So your team, team ready?
Are you ready?
Alright, ready, yeah. Next up, yep, so I'll just introduce Mr. Waltz. Mr. Waltz is agriculture teacher, advisor of our FFA. And also like to recognize Leslie Arsenal, the other agriculture teacher at Sydney Central School District. Who had a leadership team that was an awesome opportunity, and they're going to share.
Alright, so we're presenting tonight about an experience that we had that was kind of new to Sydney FFA, not new to the FFA, called the State Leaders Experience. And we had the opportunity to travel to Albany to visit the Capitol during, right before their legislative period. So we got to meet with some senators, legislators, the governor, and actually have some small one-on-one conversations with some of our local legislators and larger conversation with the governor. And they're here to share their experience with you. And it was a great opportunity for us to learn about how government works. I was happy to see that, you know, most of the legislators that we met with also are at a lot of their county fairs and, you know, also participate in a lot of events and really hit the ground running as far as making contact with people and seeing the need for people, because that's what government's supposed to do and work for us, so.
Alright, so my name is Cooper Harvey, I am the Sydney FFA president. So I'm going to start off with the introduction of our day one at the conference. So these were our state officers presenting in three different sessions that ran from about 12 o'clock to about 10 o'clock. It was a long day. So session one was called the arena, session two was called the issues, session three was called the players. And they stayed there, they had us talk about some key messages. And we said in notes that they wanted us to bring up the following day to these representatives. Starting with day one, whoa, one too far. Alright, so session one, so some of the things we talked about was the legislative process, the powers, and we learned about who our representatives are. We had these very, really helpful websites to help us go on and find our representatives for our local area and learn a little bit about them and the ideas that we should bring them the following day. So we knew we could get answers or even bring up things that they didn't even know about. So one thing that we brought up to some of our representatives was that we are a K through 12 ag school, which a lot of schools aren't, as you said, high school, and that we were able to expand with our aquaponics and stuff like that done in the elementary school.
Did it go or no?
No.
It just builds anticipation, what it's.
Okay, so the second part of session one was, we had an activity where they presented us with ideas. A bunch of groups had different ideas, and we had a current flag, as you can see, about the idea we can have just food insecurity. The idea was that we really just had to get this and try to think of all these things that are super important to food security, and being able to present them so we knew how it was to be the government and see what these types of things that they see are.
So the next part was in session two. We took the things that we did in session one, like our food insecurity and stuff, and then we had members within the conference pretending to be legislators. And they came up, we had groups come up and present to legislators, and they had to decide whether it was, it should get passed on or it should not get their vote. So then after we did that and like had that hands-on experience in that situation, we then got to meet with more representatives and like hear their viewpoint of it after we got to do our viewpoint of it.
So the third session, it was about strengthening the communication abilities and build core advocacy skills, and just talked about the key messages and effectively telling your story. So the first key message that we had to basically bring to legislators was the FFA develops students into positive leaders for ourselves, our schools and our communities. The second one is FFA prepares students for careers in and beyond agriculture through our real-world experiences. And the third one was FFA and agriculture education help make school more engaging and successful.
Alright, so moving on to day two, this is where we actually went in to meet with all representatives in person. So we had breakfast with the governor, meeting with our representatives, and then there was some other options if you had downtime from your meetings. You could visit the New York State Museum of Exploration and get a Capitol tour with your group.
This is just a little bit more on the breakfast with the governor. We worked on breakfast, we had a good vision, we listened to her as well as many other of our representatives throughout the entire state to speak, and that was as well for that.
Alright, so this is where we actually went in and met with our representatives. So we met with Assemblyman Brian, last name?
Mayor.
Mayor. Assemblyman Joe Angelino and Senator Peter Oberacher. So we were all very, very people to meet with, and we're glad that we were able to meet with them, because not only was it us in the meeting, but it was other schools, and we actually heard about some of their issues that they had in the local area or even nationally, and even hear about their school programs. And we actually took a lot of that and we plan to implement some of it. Next up, we have, oh, next up, no. So we actually loved Assemblyman Joe Angelino so much that we planned to invite him to our annual awards banquet at the end of the year to just let him see even more of our program. He was very happy that we were a K through 12 ag school. He's very local in the area, so he was very informationalist, and this was a one-on-one meeting. So we did get a lot more out of it and talked about more of our personal experiences within FFA and agriculture. Alright, so that's it. We just wanted to thank you guys for letting, oh. Last I just said thank you, we just wanted to thank you guys for presenting, letting us present to you guys, and the thank you to the New York State FFA for this opportunity.
Does anybody have any questions about the experience or the two days we're in Albany?
I hope they see the value in this. I mean, a lot of times they're talking about life skills in school and what you can learn from that, even if you're not going to go into full-time agriculture. This is a life skill that everybody, you know, there's a lot of people that have the hobby of gardening and growing their own food, even if it's on a small scale versus a large scale. So the importance of life schools, that life skills being made at the school, blah, blah. I think that's, I think that's a great message and something they should be very receptive to. So nice job.
Thank you, yeah. The legislators we met with were really interested in hearing about what we're doing at Sydney, and some of them, I think, were testing us, I think they knew what we were doing. One of them mentioned, I was like, wait to hear about the Raymond program. I was like, oh, okay. So they kind of already knew what was happening, they, which made me feel good that they not just represent a large district and some of the lines are really strange in the different areas that they represent, but they actually know who lives in their district and what's going on. So especially in the school district, so that was nice to hear. And, you know, we made some connections. Mr. Oberacher had a food science background, which we didn't know about, made his own barbecue sauces. He was talking about some of those opportunities with kids if they're interested in food sciences, and I think he worked for ConAgra for several years before he got into the office, so.
Have a question?
Yes.
Being around those leaders, does that inspire any of you to apply for or seek out any other leadership opportunities?
So personally for me, people with like this type, but I don't want to say power, but impact on the world very inspires me, so I wouldn't say take their spot, but be very close to it in the future.
And Leanne, I am sure as you had to sign the papers, we are, both of us are running for our district president, so being able to see these people and have this much impact on us is really helping us see how we can have much power on our smaller district, but make it a lot more impactful.
Yeah, I would say about the same thing. She kind of took my, myself on, I just president, to share that experience. And being able to see like the impact that they have on our state especially just really makes us want to be more involved with that.
I mean, in the short time that I have left in high school, just trying to make that much more of an impact on our FFA as a whole and just the community in general.
What did you guys think of when you're going to meet with the representatives? A lot of times you're in a 15, 20 or 30-minute block, and you have to be very clear and very quick to your point, because they have meetings scheduled throughout the day. What did you guys think of that process of really getting to the heart of your message in a hurry? And, you know, getting that conveyed to them so they could, you know, have a dialogue with you. It's a difficult thing to do, to put what you want to say in a five-minute quick update to a member of, you know, our legislature. What did you think of that process?
So it was definitely when we saw the schedule of all the other schools meeting, we're like, whoa, like what is this? But we feel that they, this was very impactful for them, that they made sure that we could fit in as much as we could. Obviously, we can't fit in everything, FFA is so big and so is the agriculture world. We couldn't fit in everything, but they made sure to make it their point to know about the most important things within this time period.
It's very amazing, it's amazing how they engage so quickly. And, you know, in a short meeting, they are very responsive.
Nice job, I'm just super proud of you taking leadership opportunities. Right, these are, these are opportunities that, yeah, you could do, right? But you've embraced them, right? And you're making a difference with them. So I'm just super proud of you actually like taking these opportunities seriously, running with them and growing from them, and just growing as human beings, right? It's awesome to see, see this leadership team work so well with each other, take advantage of these opportunities. Proud of you.
And thank you very much for always coming to present to us. It's really the best part, being on the board, is getting to see the students and hear the things they're doing. And so I appreciate that the FFA always comes to present to us.
Thank you for having us, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Nice job.
Thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm really looking forward to different tennis reports.
You know how to clear a room.
We're all looking forward to it.
That's the light I missed, that's the most important thing. Yeah, so I'll jump right into the budget presentation, same format as what we've done in years past, is to tie in just our new blueprint that we had worked on this last year, right? To kind of focus and drive our efforts with a theme of everyone belongs, with a new mission, vision and core values. And again, really grounding ourselves in what we do with making decisions financially, right? To be able to support our programs. The three goals that we have are focused around student supports, community connections and academic excellence. And I thought a great way to let pictures kind of tell the story is just our commitment in recognizing students' hard work and efforts and dedication to just being good people and being successful. And this is just an example of student of the month for grade seven to 12. And again, just to kind of let some pictures tell the stories, right? Our student supports, where everyone belongs, is in the left-hand side with Elementary Counselor Eric Nortonhold leading our kindness group, if you've seen that, there's some of the things that they've done is they're, the Kindness Club recognizes transportation staff, they recognize buildings and grounds, and they really take an initiative to center themselves around kindness and recognize that kindness. In the top right-hand corner is just Mr. Wood, an example of his commitment to celebrating successes in the primary school with a pride assembly. And then the bottom right is a commitment back to, back to our community and what this group does, the Flood Monitoring Project under the leadership of Mr. Townsend, presenting at Rotary in four towns, four groups. They're doing a community presentation later on this month. It is just their commitment back, and again, supporting students and doing the things that they love to do, things that are good for the community, and obviously the great leadership of Mr. Townsend. And academic excellence, and I don't know how you guys don't love the picture on the left-hand side, that's my clue there, is just their excitement for school and, you know, when they do get recognized for the great work that they do. And then our teachers' commitments and our staff commitment is to, to working with kids. That's important. Our community connections on the left-hand side is part of the financial literacy curriculum and the efforts that we do in our fourth grade, working and partnering with the Sydney Federal Credit Union, a partnership Mr. Stenner works very hard with, signing in community partnerships, and again, with our commitment to financial literacy in the elementary. On the top right-hand corner is our very own, Mrs. Amanda Finch, who came in to read to kids in our elementary, this is, I believe, is a second grade classroom. Guests came in to K-1, 2 to come in and just read it. It was last Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, I had the opportunity to read to some kindergartners, as many, many people did. And I just thanked Mr. Wood for the opportunity to engage others in coming into the classroom and just sharing the joy of learning. And the bottom right-hand side is just, it was our first community cultural event that we did for the community, and many thanks to Mr. Hanson and Mr. Wood and just a whole host of people, right? That put on a very nice community culture event with just recognizing how diverse and how great our community and how great our school is. So those are all good things to ground ourselves in before we really talk about numbers. Like why do we do what we do, right? And why do we support what it is that we support and the initiatives that we do? Just a quick comparison of numbers. On the left-hand side, you'll see the current state aid allocations, and on the right-hand side, the 24, 25 state aid allocations. Now, these are still projections, we still do not have a governor's budget yet. So these are, again, I'll just picture it, these are. So these are, again, I'll, which is a picture set, these are projections, right? We don't know what will, what will happen, there's been lots of press around what could potentially happen with, with school finance. There could be more money, right? The governor's come out and said that there's an extra $1.3 billion that's going to be put back into budget, so we don't know how much of that may or may not be allocated to schools, really not quite sure. So we build on the budget based on what we know right now on these projections. So foundation aid is up just a little bit, you'll see from year to year, a very slight increase. Our BOSI's budget is, is up about $400,000, and that's just more services going into, running through BOSI's. High tax aid doesn't change really. Hardware, software, library, and textbook, doesn't change a whole lot, it really depends on your enrollment, what you have, and what you use. The key to those are just make sure that you spend them, because if you don't spend them, you will lose them. Transportation aid is obviously relatively the same, it's about $100,000 less. Our building aid, there's an asterisk by that, and I think I talked a little bit about this before, is, it's just critical that we close out this capital project, the one that we're currently in right now, we need to close it out, be done to the state, filed by December, and we can start to draw aid on that. I put an asterisk next on that because it's, let's say something doesn't happen, we don't get closed out, that will, that number will decrease by about $645,000. I think that we will get it done, I think there's ample time to get it done. Right now, this, the plan is to be done, all closed out by October fifteenth, so it gives us an extra, you know, month and a half or so to be able to do that, but we do have to close out all financial documents by December, what to start to generate aid during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So overall state aid, yeah, this is just your state aid package, is, excuse me, up about $700,000 or something.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
The, the, the press right now is, the initial budget was cutting school funding.
Fifty percent of schools.
And I know that over the next month, you know, when you have the one house and two house bills and all that, that'll come out, it'll, it'll move a lot. But I know there was somebody recently that had an article that they were a small district, they were already, and he was Hancock, even, it was down to one teacher, and, and they were talking about how big of an impact it has, about what, you know, kind of worst-case scenario, how does it impact us?
For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year?
Yeah.
It doesn't.
No, no. If we weren't affected by the cuts, the hanging tackles?
No. So some of the, some of the school districts, right, were cut fairly substantially, right? Just some neighboring districts, I'll use Franklin and Hancock, I won't mention too many, right, Downsville, substantially, like, million-dollar reduce, right? That is, that, that is catastrophic for school districts, right? That is, when you have an operating budget around $10 million, and you're cut by a million, that's not, let's just lay off some people and cut some supplies and material, but that's catastrophic. So, no, we, we actually added an increase that was around, like, I think, $223,000, that was about 1.4% in state aid from year to year. So it, it's not what we thought, maybe 3%, that maybe we were going to get, it's about half that. That's really why I think it's important to consider the 2% tax increase, right, to put us back to about that two, or that 3%, because that generates, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit about that, generates a little bit of money back. I, I would say no impact of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, but we should, we should really potentially buckle up for two, three, four years down the road. Yeah, if that's the case, if it kind of turns that way. But I would say right now, you know, Sydney's in a good, good spot, right? I mean, we've made great financial decisions for decades, you know, with, with good reserves and smart spending and just being careful. So for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, I would say no impact. Not like, not like what you're talking about now.
Yeah, I mean, that, like you say, with Enstrapping, I mean, they're really, they're panicking.
Yeah, 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 yep. It'll be interesting to see what happens, like what you talked about in the next month, see what happens. One thing I just wanted to make a note, in case you notice, right, the BOSI's budget does jump up about $400,000. So remember our after-school program and our summer enrichment program, they are run through BOSI's, right? We have, we have funded that through federal funds for the last three and a half years, right? So we're building that back into the general fund, right? So that there is no, there's no loss, if you will, with any types of programs, so that's where you'll see that. And just in case anybody ever asks, the after-school program and the summer enrichment program combined costs us, we, we run about $550,000 for the, for the after-school program for the year and for the summer program. That is run through BOSI's, that is the equal item. So in case somebody ever asks, right? So that's the increase, because we built it back into the BOSI's budget. Other revenue projections, if you saw the state aid, that number just carries over to $23,780,000. The local tax share, the $6,253,535, that reflects the 2% increase, right? So the tax levy going up. So the tax levy going up by 2% generates an additional $122,618.34 of new money. So again, if you look at the state aid increase of $223,000, and add that to the new money of $122,000, right, that's your, about your 3% of your, of your increase of new money, right? Some miscellaneous revenues, again, this is like your Masonville lease, could be foster children placed in other districts that we get money back, or things like that. Appropriated from debt service, you'll see $250,000, and that's really just one of those, is we have that, and we're putting it in there to offset, if that capital project somehow does not get closed out, then we wouldn't have to eat the $600,000 out of the general fund, we can offset it with debt service. Debt service fund, that's what it's there for, is to offset any building aid shortage you might have with your debt service payment, right? So that's a, we hope we don't have to use it, I don't think we will, but that kind of would soften that a little bit. And appropriated from fund balances, a million dollars. So we're looking for a total revenue budget, a total, total budget of $32,71,491. Taking a look at the expense side of it, and again, these are the categorical areas of 1,000, 2,000, 5,000, 7,000, and 9,000, so you can see the comparison, you can now break each one of these things down, but you can see a comparison for each one, for each one. So again, your 1,000s, and you can see kind of what, what's built into this. So from any type of water education costs, central data processing, maintenance of plant, district clerk, business administrators, BOSI's administrative costs, $6 million, just over. Your program lines, or instructional lines, and this is all teachers and supervision of, co-inter校ized sports, social workers, supervision, teachers, health, and services, so a whole, whole bunch of stuff, co-curricular things, so just over $15 million, $15,168,031. Transportation, you'll see built in here again, is 265 passenger buses. We're building this right into the general fund again, not as a separate referendum. And other expenses for the district transportation in the building, or the garage building, so $1,581,922.
Nice enough, very quick. This one, so the, the funding went down by $100,000, our expenses are expected to go up by about $200,000. And with the initiative for the electric buses and electrifying the fleet, and all the planning that we have to do with that, is there a lag on that support? Or, I mean, it just, it does, you know, the initiative is to electrify school buses in schools, and then they cut the funding to transportation, or our funding got cut. I was just wondering if it was a lag in the reimbursement that we're giving, or if that truly went down?
Yeah, transportation, you get back, you get back 90% on transportation, right? So it could be that the, let's say the buses last year, we bought a couple of things last year that aren't in there, that was $78,000, right? So not necessarily got cut, we just didn't spend as much, right, in, in that line. It's important to note, too, I bet you actually paused me for, that these 265 passenger buses are not electric buses, these are diesel buses, right? This is just part of our normal fleet replacement plan. So, yeah, I mean, you, you make a, you asked lots of questions, and I comment there, is, there's a lot with the electrification, right? We're going to slow it steady. We actually just got confirmation this week that we were approved for the NICE cert of funding, right, to do the transportation fleet study, which will start, I think I just saw today in an email, it takes about eight weeks or so for that to get underway, and that's where they look at all your utilities, what utilities do you have, what would you need to completely charge your fleet. So we're still, we're still well off. What is nice about that is we did, we did receive an allocation set aside of $392,000 towards a voucher towards electric buses. Now, we, and what we submitted in that was two electric buses, so I think that $392,000 was a voucher for the two buses, but we are, we are, we are a long ways off that, right? And early, we might see a referendum for a, on a record bus a year from now, right, in May of '25. But there's a lot that's got to go into this, a lot of the study, a lot of, a lot of infrastructure conversations, a lot of communications to the community, too. It, it's going to take time, too. Some of the, the main milestones, and I mentioned this before, I know, but just to kind of bring these up again, some of the main milestones is 2027, as it sits right now, is, you're not going to be able to purchase any diesel buses after 2027, as it sits right now. There's lots of conversations of that being, you know, extended out as long as you're making progress towards, right? For example, we have some hybrid vans, right? And we've done our NICE cert of study, so we're making progress towards. And then the other big milestone date is 2035, where your fleet has to be converted over to electric. Now, that's a long ways off. But those are a couple of big milestones of that, and continue to have conversations. Because we'll probably get more into that conversation once we see what the NICE cert of study comes back, and the transportation fleet study, say, you know, what does our infrastructure look like, what do we need, what can we do? But again, as I mentioned before, is I think it would make sense to, you know, move forward probably a year from now, right? And look at getting one electric bus, and let, let, let people try it, right? Try it on different runs, and collect some data to see what works and what doesn't work. It allows our drivers to, to train on it and practice on it, allows our mechanics to train on it and practice on it. But a lot, a lot can change between now and then, too. So, yeah, I mean, slow and steady, and, you know, be methodical and be smart with it. But, yeah, I mean, it's, work towards it, though.
Thank you.
Next is the 7,000 line, right? This is our recreation and community access, this is really all lifeguard for community swim in the morning and community swim at night, lifeguard expenses. Our 9,000 lines, this is, this is a big ticket item with our state retirements, your ERS and TRS, and all of your insurances, ancillary insurances, $9,234,876. So just trying to compare line to line, dollar, dollar for dollar, if you will, year to year, you'll see the general scores down just a touch. Programmatic means an instruction line is, is up about three-quarters of the money or so. Transportation line is, is up about $227,000. Again, just to change your community services for lifeguards, a little bit more usage in that, which is awesome. And then our insurances is down about $160,000, and a lot of that is debt service because the big project fell off this year. So that's a really all in debt service rebuilding. So when you're looking at a comparison from 23, 24-year current year to the next year, increased budget to budget, $766,633. And again, this is just comparing your revenue on the left-hand side to your expenses on the right-hand side, just summarizing the slides up that we've showed before. So total, total dollar figure, right, $32,71,491. Next steps will be to adopt the budget in April 16th. Mrs. Warner and I will spend a lot of time, probably after the governor's budget come out on the first, just to go back through and refine things, hopefully it comes out on the first, and go back through and refine. And then we will provide, that's where we'll do an updated version of this, and also the line-by-line expenses in categories, and then the adoption of that budget. And those will be the, those will be the next steps. And remember, this is a week later than what it normally is, so we align it to the DCMO BOSI's budget, but at the same time, so that there's not too many.
I heard that the New York State budget is going to be very tough for April 1st because of the way Easter's falling, and, and how many meetings they're going to be able to have with Passover and Easter, so. They may be late this year, and they may be significantly late.
Yeah, and you can still adopt the budget, right? You still go forward, I missed that a couple of years ago, what do you do with not a budget? You still adopt it, move forward as, as, as is. So, any, any questions on that? I think we're in a good spot right now. Is, is the district, I think we're in a good spot. Mr. Warner's done a tremendous amount of work, is, is just kind of learning and going through and looking at lines and putting together what I think is a, is a good budget, so. Thank you. I just had a couple of other little updates, if you don't mind, with some of the general things, is this Friday, we're, is our March conference day, focusing just on a couple things in the morning. There are some sessions with, really focused on co-teaching, and how to strengthen our co-teaching model. There's also some sessions on the workplace violence prevention. Workplace violence prevention training has to be done by May 3rd. Our transportation staff and our building grounds will go through that to make sure that we start to meet with that, and that's partnership with DCMO BOSI's in it. And this weekend, we are hosting the All County, Friday and Saturday, which is super cool to be able to host that. And the POD project, so POD project is the elementary area, right, receiving new events. This is part of the federal money, very similar to what we did in the junior, senior high school last year. It's actually moving along extremely well, I just want to give a lot of shout-out to Mr. Wood, the first-grade team, Beth Wonderlick, Gina McManus, some of the rooms are being disrupted, Eric Norton Hole, our literacy specialist, I'm going to learn the groundwell, and Amanda Robinson, and if I'm missing somebody else, I apologize. Just really being flexible with allowing flex classrooms, so they can get in. We, we completed one room already, and these are the hybrid systems, if you will, that are going to now have more efficient air, but air conditioning as well, too. So heating and air conditioning in all of the rooms, the last section of the elementary will do that. So it's actually moving along extremely well, we have one room completely done, start to finish, and it's just, it's moving along pretty well. So the, the goal is to finish this project before Memorial Day, as the other one really kind of catapults itself into. So, and just shout-out to Mr. Stelman, too, Mr. Stelman's doing a great job of coordination with that. The next one is the Smart Schools Bond Act, and remember, the Smart Schools Bond Act is the classroom emergency notification system going into the high school. These will be, we're all in displays where the clocks are, if you will, you'll be able to have more interaction within classrooms, if you will, better communication, better alerts, displaying the time, and just, not only in classrooms, but in hallways and common areas. So that, that was approved, and it looks like we're going to be able to do that work this summer, that partnership with data automation. So right now, Tony's kind of heading that piece up, and right now, we're testing all of the lines in all of the rooms where those devices will be installed in the common areas. Next one is just the capital project. It's going, it's going to be busy this summer, there's no question about it. There's a, a lot of cool stuff that are going to start probably in April, late March and in April. Everything from pavilions to parking lots, to playgrounds, to weight room, to fuel tanks, to the Masonville campus, there's just going to be a lot of, a lot of stuff going on. And our goal is to do what we did the last capital project, is to communicate early and often, and we'll send weekly communications out that will talk about what's been done and what to expect, and any type of flex plans that we need to do, for example, like what's going on in first grade is in the flex classrooms. People have been great, but our commitment is to do, you know, early, often transparent communication, and it worked pretty good the last time. And the last bit I included, the last of all updates, is just the Sydney Sabers, now I can say that with our logo and our mascot, is our Sydney Sabers Social Emotional Learning Welcome Back to School kits for next year. There'll be a public bid that will go out, I think it's going to go out on the March 18th or 19th, whenever the Daily Star can run that. And it's to request really branded material, Sydney Sabers material. And we're going to build kits, 1,100 kits for the kids to come back to school, that will be branded Sydney Sabers, and a, and a lot of useful things that are going to that. And the funding for that is all federal funds, there's, there's no local fund for that, it is all American Rescue funds, and back to kids, and tying into the social emotional learning. So that'll go out with the Daily Star, like I said, I think that's, they don't run on Monday, so I think it's Tuesday, the 19th. And I think that's it? Any questions at all? Appreciate it. Oh, unused emergency days, sorry, the last one there. So I forgot it's up there, is a, unused emergency days, so I'm going to communicate in case anybody's asked, I'll communicate after this long weekend coming up, because I'll be able to see a 10-day forecast, right, in case it's all the way to spring break, and then we'll go from there. We do have to give back six emergency days. So I, I'll communicate that out, right, through social media, through our school messenger system, it's probably as early as maybe next Tuesday, the 19th, so that I can see all the way to spring break, and make sure that we're kind of safe there. And I think we, the design is to give back days appropriately, so first of all, they make sense, but also if something has to happen, there's a water main break or something like that, we can use days later on, all the way into June, so it, it allows some flexibility in case something like that happens.
Sure.
Hold on.
Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting, Board of Education meeting, held on February 13, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
None.
Those opposed? Carried. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the personnel consent agenda as presented. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any objections? Carried. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda as presented. agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a question on that. On the calendar, on the Bosse calendar, you show January 29th as a holiday, but you don't show that for the days off for holidays for the staff.
Yeah.
That is, I have to report that day or?
Yeah, so 12-month staff would have to report that day. Yeah, it's not enough.
And then for the other, the teachers too? Like, a D you didn't list it.
No, so, so the D, those are for 12-month staff.
Oh, that's just for 12-month staff. So they have to come here and, or?
Yeah. It is, it is not a recognized holiday for this year.
Okay, that's all, that's the only question.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to commit to the purchase of technology equipment for the instructional technology service from Room Tioka Bosse's as presented. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the legal notice for the public hearing, budget vote, and election to be held on May 21, 2024. All those in favor? Any opposed? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the intellectual property release agreement as presented. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Can I just say one other thing to that? It's just attached to that, you'll see, you'll see the resolution just attached and you'll see the agreement attached with shoe prints. And then you'll see what's called the Exhibit A. Exhibit A is the four logos that I mentioned in the beginning of the presentation. And just want to mention again too is, first of all, Tim Schubert is an alumni at Sydney Central School District, which I think is a school that created this. But also just the fact that they have been, they have been so good to work with. When they designed it and he said, listen, whatever the district needs, right, we will give all rights over, we, you know, it just, they, they have been great to work with, they have been thoughtful, they have been just a great partner and really taking it seriously that they had an opportunity to contribute and give back to the Sydney Central School District of this opportunity. And I just, I can't thank them enough. I think it's cool that the city alumni that did that as well too. So I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that, I meant, I forgot to mention it when you was here, but, yeah, just give them the thanks.
Thank you. One more comments.
I would just say thank you for, you know, your, the entire team of going through the mascot and the, the name change. Yeah, that's, that's a very difficult process and there's a lot of emotions involved and you guys handled it really well and, and kept things moving. And then also the budget. Yeah, it's, it's a comfort to know that our, our financial situation has been so thoughtful and planned for the future and, and we are in a good position. You know, I think that's a credit to, you know, all of you guys working on this. And it's a, it's a comfort to know that even with all the conversations and stuff going on, you guys have plans for the future, you've set us up for success. And I mean, those are huge things. I mean, changing the name, you know, where's, it was a very emotional situation for the, you know, the school district. And then the budget is always, there's a lot of districts that are not in our position. And I mean, it's a, it's a tremendous, you know, value to this district that our budget is so strong and, and those are huge accomplishments and, you know, thank you very much.
I'll second that. I think it's really important that the students were able to be involved, but really the process was shepherded in a way that you gave a master class about how to respond to something that you have no control over. And so I just thank you all for all of the work that you did. I just really appreciate the students' participation, the fact that it was centered around them the whole time, and I think that speaks volumes.
And I want to thank Even again for helping out the village. In case you don't know, like, we are doing development over Cloverhill Leaning Property, and Even told me at after last forum meeting that he would help with our request for a proposal. So he took his own time and did it, and it was great. We're going to go try to get out there, get the help work coming. And again, that's going to tie it into helping our whole school district because one of the keys is that you want to keep having, you know, more houses here, have more families here. And that's what we appreciate. I just wanted to tell you.
The last thing I want to say, because I don't want us to be here forever, is that I had a really great time at the Read Across America. I realize that my eyes are closed in the photo, but I was awake and paying attention. But the students were really fun, that it was, it was engaging, they asked questions, they, you know, we joked around a little bit. My book was black and white and they were sure that it was from the 1980s. I was like, I promise you, we had color books in the 1980s.
I picked the first book.
But, and Mrs. Link's definitely like, that was not that long ago. So it was just really fun to come in and, and get to read to the kids and, and be in the classroom. So thank you for inviting us. Anybody else? Good. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Thank you, everybody.